Let's go ahead and call the meeting on order. Councilman Gillespie, would you be able to send the question?
Fledge allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we take roll call, I'd just like to say a few words. On Saturday, October 24th, our community lost a great man, a man whose heart was bigger than his stature. Marv Matkins, you have left a legacy in Hill City and are an unforgettable member of our Hill City family. God bless you, Marv, and may he keep you close in his graces. May his perpetual light shine upon you. God bless your family and keep them strong, knowing how dearly they will miss you. If we could just bow our moment for our, bow our heads for a moment in silence. Okay. All right, Stacia, roll call vote, please.
Dell Householder?
Here.
Jason Gillespie?
Here.
Carl Doty?
Here.
Gary Alk?
Here.
All right. We have a quorum. Any conflicts of interest with anything as indicated in the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'll declare a conflict of interest for myself on action items B and C.
Okay. When we come to discussion on that asset, you'd either remove yourself from the room or sit in the back of the audience and not participate in the conversation. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Approval of 10-26-2020 Agenda, approval of 10-13-2020 Meeting Minutes, and approval of Claims. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Alderman Gillespie, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Alk, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dell Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Aye.
Carl Doty?
Aye.
Gary Alk?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried. I would like to open it up for public comments. Any members of the public may speak on an item that is not on the agenda. We ask that you please limit your remarks to three minutes. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Action items. Action Item 7A, Request of Reduction to Water Sewer Bill Leak 310 Bet Matkins Avenue, Peggy Douglas. At this point, I'd like to inform the council that we have received correspondence from Ms. Douglas. She is unable to make the meeting right now due to an illness and ask that we please postpone this item. So with that being said, I'd like to ask that the council acknowledge that request and vote to table this until such a time that she has recovered and we can replace it on the agenda.
So move.
Alderman Householder, second Alderman Gillespie, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jason Gillespie?
Aye.
Carl Doty?
Aye.
Gary Alk?
Yes.
Dell Householder?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, motion carried. Action Items 7B and C. So I'm going to read both of these off as they are tandem projects. However, we will vote, be voting on them separately. So Action Item 7B, Bid Board Project Number One, Alley Parking and Place Base Improvements. Authorization to proceed with bid process. And I'm sure during that conversation, Action Item 7C, Bid Board Project Number One, Public Restrooms and Senior Center Edition. Authorization to proceed with bid process will also be discussed. So Brett, will you please walk us through the action items?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to give kind of a quick synopsis of the project or projects. They're all under Project Number One, but there's two components to it. Give an update of what those projects consist of and then also kind of what's been done with each one, because one actually went out to bid already. So we'll start with the alley project, one, since that's Action Item B. So the Bid Board had an all encompassing project request of building in addition onto the senior center with primarily public restrooms being put on there. And I think this is coming up. Another element to that is improving the alleyway. So right now, it's a gravel alleyway. There's some issues with the drainage and whatnot. So the intent is to asphalt the alley, put in concrete curb gutter. We don't need to do storm sewer. We can surface flow everything to Elm Street. But we'll fix the grade in there and we've got it all engineered out. I've got plans over sitting on that chair if anybody's interested in flipping through the current set of plans. On top of asphalting that alley and improving it, there was also an element of handicap parking. And that actually is, you can't kind of see it, but if I can back up to the regular view, but... Creating some handicap spaces in this area. This is the senior center building. This is the log building. Creating some handicap spaces here. And then another element was this tennis court area with the asphalt. Essentially just putting in some new asphalt, tearing down these restrooms that currently exist and just cleaning up this space to use it for public parking. And then another element of that project was to remove these racquetball courts and have this as kind of an open green space, astroturf area, kind of like what the school did, with some drainage in it so that there's drainage comes out of it. So this project received permission to go out to bid from the city council back on January 27th of 2020. And it was put out to bid with the base element being the work done on the alleyway. So that was kind of the guaranteed work. Then we added in alternate work, which would be this handicap parking, the tennis court, and then also this astroturf area. They were additional alternatives that could be done depending on how the prices come back. So I have a copy of all of those bids that came back in. So that was January 27th that it was authorized to go out to bid. Back in March 9th of this year, the bids were back in front of city council. The overall project cost that came back, and this was, there was only one company that had bid, the Simon Contractor. Their bid was for a little over $472,000. And that was about $207,000 above what our engineer estimate was for the project. Now, we've, we've experienced a few different price quotes over the years from Simons. And just my own opinion is that Simons usually is a little bit higher than everybody else. But the problem is, is that they were the only one bidding on the project. So at that time, the recommendation from the Bid Board was to not accept that price quote. And that's what council did. They refused that price. Okay, so that was on March 9th. Then in May 26th of this year, both of these items were brought back, just like they are tonight, for consideration by the council discussion. And that's when COVID was kind of in its, at least early stages, but getting quite ramped up with concerns about financial revenues coming in. So on March or on May 26th, both of these items were tabled for 60 days to see how the revenues would flow in and see what was going on with everything in the world. That question wasn't again revisited until August 10th. And at such time, the council tabled it for another 45 days. And so we're just, we're beyond that 45 days now and bringing it back to you. We had originally scheduled this to be before the council at your last meeting, but we had such a full agenda. It seemed like this one was a better one to tackle it up. So the one, the things that we've talked about in the past on this asphalt project is one of the reasons why the prices came back so high was that we had third, three alternative things that could or could not happen. And so they weren't a guarantee that a contractor that they would. Essentially, they could be taken off. So we could have just accepted the asphalt work in the alley, but not done the other three elements. And so that was one consideration of bundling it all together of saying, okay, are we really sure we want to do all, all of the elements of this project and just put it into all in the base bid? The other thing that we've discussed in the past is having a big enough window, a construction window, that we could include as many potential bidders as possible. I know our, our first go at it, we had a fairly short window that we wanted it completed before, I think it was the middle of June. And I don't think that there was kind of a window of opportunity for some companies to work on it. And in fact, we did hear back from one potential bidder that they were already booked up, that they couldn't, they wouldn't have the time to work on it during that timeframe. So I think one of the recommendations that comes forward is that time is very important in enticing construction companies to, you know, bid on these projects. That if they've got a slot in their calendar that they can put us in there and do the work, then they probably will be interested. Again, one of the major concerns over the past six months has been revenue that's been coming in. Stacia just ran some numbers for me today, so thank you, Stacia. As far as Bid Board collections, year-to-date so far, we're at about, what did you say, 83%?
Yeah. Compared to what we budgeted.
Yeah, compared to what we budgeted. So year-to-date... Let's see. I've got the right paper here. So year-to-date, we budgeted about, let's see.
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five thousand. So we've collected year-to-date, $88,038. The dollar amount that's sitting in the fund that we've collected ever since we started this $2 per room night tax, there's two, there's currently $254,765 sitting in that fund right now. So a little over a quarter of a million dollars. And that, and that is received from the hotels. We receive a report by the 20th of every month with what their nightly room sales are and their payment for the $2 per room night tax. So the question before you tonight is if there's an interest to move forward with going out to bid again on this project. I didn't prepare any potential dates, but I can give you the milestones that we typically do. So we usually have a date where bids are due. At this point, we would probably do something in December, like the first part of December of when the bids would be due in. That window of them to submit bids is usually about two weeks, three weeks if we want to. Just depends on what we feel, how long we want to give them to turn around. We usually have a pre-bid meeting so that all the contractors can come and we can describe the work and clarifying the issues that exist. And then once the bids are received, usually that same day at that deadline, you know, if it's a Tuesday at noon, we open up the bids and open it up to the public and advertise it so that we know what the bids are. And then at the next meeting of the council, then those who will be brought before you to look at what the submitted bids look like. And then you can kind of determine what your comfort level is with the expenditure of funds. So this is, this is just the copy I have of the last one. It's kind of just in a table format. And it's broken out by the core project and the alternatives. What we do is we just put in the engineer's cost estimate in here, what we think it should cost. And then the real cost is in here for everybody to compare and contrast. When you go out to bid, there's no requirement that you accept the bid. Like the last one, they dismissed this bid. So we're not locked in. So we can go out and we can hunt for, you know, another bid from a contractor and go out and see what it's going to cost us. I've been hearing lately in news reports and just my own experience that materials, access to construction materials and price of construction materials is going up. I just had a conversation with our city engineer last week. And I was asking him about other bid projects that he's involved with, with the city of, Bid City and the county and whatnot. He's saying that most of the bids that are being opened and, and being awarded now are probably about 30% higher this year than they were last year. So I, I would expect that the cost is going up. And, but yet, I think everybody's construction window is still pretty jam-packed with work. I don't see construction cooling down. Everybody I've talked to has said it's still going pretty strong. So, you know, it's, it's a consideration of whether you want to go out to bid and just see what kind of price you find. Again, I think we need to look at how long are we willing for this work to be scheduled? You know, are you willing to go out a year, a year and a half, two years, saying, hey, you've got two years to complete this project? But once you start it, maybe we give them a 90-day window to complete it once you start. But you've got two years to put it into your schedule. We've got to be somewhat open to that, I think, in order to attract additional bidders. Kale, Kale essentially said, you know, if we go out to bid, that he'd probably like to see something let in December in that timeframe. So I don't have those specifics as far as the dates, because I first need to know if you're wanting to move forward. Then I can, I can move forward with Kale on those dates and make everything work. So.
So before I open it up for public comment, just as a matter of comparison, Brett, can you give us a little bit of information relative to the sidewalk project and what date that was started? And when the technical, the technical end date is to kind of illustrate the amount of time that was put into that bid letting on that project?
Well, the, you know, that project, the sidewalk project is still open for, I think, in about another year. There was, beyond that, there was obviously a lot of discussion with the city of, okay, what, what's the best timeframe in which to work on our sidewalks? Because we can't shut down Main Street and shut down our economic engine of our, of our local shops. That doesn't make sense. So it worked out pretty well. We started right after Labor Day last year with the construction. And we actually adjusted where they were starting, which I think worked out just fine. Where they created that bump out on the east side and didn't disrupt in front of like granite sports. So it kind of all worked and fell into place that by the end of September, they were kind of into the main block and then traffic was down. And so essentially, that construction company had from Labor Day right after Labor Day all the way through winter up until, what was it, May 1st, in order to complete the project. Now with that project, there was impact to parking, obviously. But during those months of, you know, December, January, February, March, parking wasn't quite such a big deal. And they were really good about working with us if we had a special event like the old-time Christmas parade and whatnot and the Halloween trick-or-treaters were pouring concrete that same day. Of trying to make sure that everything still functioned, and I think it worked out pretty well. So there will be some dis, you know, disturbance of our normal routine, no matter what time of the year that I think that we do it. But, you know, we definitely, in that case, we didn't want them to be working on Main Street during July, August, June. It's not a good combination.
So when it was bid let, it was bid let with enough time to be able to manage through that process?
Yeah, it was, it was bid let, and I think it was about this time last year where we received the dollar amount of that cost of that and had to authorize it with the state in order to move forward. Because what happens is that they take a couple of months, you know, with the bid letting office with the state, it takes a while. Takes a couple of months just to get it out there. It takes a couple of months just to sign the documents and whatnot.
Okay. So before I go to council, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. If anybody would like to make comment relative to this, please come to the podium and state your name. And please limit your comments to three minutes per speaker. Okay, seeing no public comment, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Now I'm going to open up the discussion to council. Council, any questions that you have on this at this moment?
That's are the ones that I had.
Okay. Okay.
Pretty clear.
Okay, so I'll start with Alderman Doty. Alderman Doty, any discussion, any comments?
Well, the only thing I can think of is, I definitely like the idea to be able to expand the, the time for the work to be one and a half, two years out, just to give more timeframe for contractors to go and put it into their schedule. I know probably just the contractor needs to speak in here. If I put a bid in and it got rejected, put a second bid in and got rejected, I probably wouldn't bid a third time. So I think allowing more, more time to work it into the schedule, I think, would be better off. Plus, if we can expand it out a little longer, I think that'd help bring more revenue in to be able to put more money towards it, towards the end of the, the project.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Alderman Doty. Alderman Alk, any discussion?
No, I agree with Carl.
Okay. Alderman Gillespie, any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I think it'd probably be all right to wait. I think that's what I'm hearing on it. So if we go out to bid again, there's only so many times we can cry wolf to fire it out there and annoy people with bids.
Okay.
And we are, you know, down a little bit. And I know that there's been talk about exactly how we would fund it, especially given that it's going to be over what's in the Bid Board or the bid account, so to speak, anyway.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Okay.
If I can just follow up on that financial piece. So, so if you remember in our, in our 2021 budget, we essentially, just because we didn't know what to expect with COVID and with material and construction prices, if it was going to go up significantly or whatnot. But we put in there essentially a million-dollar project and between the alleyway and the restrooms that we were going to spell, potentially spend up to a million dollars. And so, you know, if we do wait, the, the longer we wait, the more money that's going to go into this fund that currently has a quarter of a million dollars in it. And then that balance is going to get borrowed against the general fund, so, and then reimbursed as the tax dollars rolling to the, to the hotel. So just, just putting that out there again, just so everybody understands how it would work. So again, just because it's in the budget does not mean that we have to spend it. We're just allowing ourselves the reality of considering that opportunity, so.
Well, I think chances are that construction is going to slow down a bit. Interest rates aren't going to be as low as they are right now forever, even in the next couple of years. So I think we'll get a better balance in the future, a little better deal maybe. I know it's a gamble, but it is, it is what it is.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you know, we've, we've been discussing it now. This is, this will be our fourth or fifth time trying to look into the crystal ball. So I mean, you can only do what you think you need to do.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion?
We either table it or shoot it down. I guess I'd make a motion to table it for... 60, 90 days? Which one's better? I mean, you've been talking to the engineer, Brett.
Let's see, if we did 60 days, we're looking at the end of the year. So we'd bring it back in January.
We're going to have a big, we're going to, our plans would be, because I agree with opening it up with a big, a long construction window. You have more people to come in and that may be, I don't know when the right time is, but...
I, I think if you, I think if you do 60 days, you can always table it again. That you're, you're not losing an extra 30 days, so to speak. You make it 90. You've still got, you've given yourself a better option.
Let's do it.
Table 60 days or January? Which 60 days is into January? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, second motion.
Okay, we got, so we've got Alderman Gillespie and second Alderman Alk. Any further discussion, council? Okay, roll call vote, please, Stacia?
Carl Doty?
Aye.
Gary Alk?
Aye.
Jason Gillespie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This item will be tabled 60 days. All right, Action Item C, Bid Board Project. This is the Restrooms and the Senior Center Edition. Authorization to proceed with the bid process.
So again, I do have the construction plans for that as well. You know, public restrooms is, is, is the biggest item that came out of our discussions over the past several years and in the comprehensive plan. So it's, it's one of those things that the community really wants to get done and moved off of that question. And that question has lingered around for a number of years. Again, we run the risk of, of the world's finance stability and material costs and whatnot. So I leave it up to you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead with your, whatever you got.
Okay, any public comment? I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Go ahead.
Was this part of the other bid, the 400 and some thousand dollar bid, the Restrooms and Senior Edition? What was the bid on this one, or has it gone out yet?
It's never gone out to bid.
It's never gone out.
Okay. So I do like the idea of chunking them up like this, but still, the construction materials is still a, a good factor as well as the money, but...
So in the, so in this project, obviously, you're dealing with construction costs related to a structure and not so much of the flat work. There are some components of concrete and whatnot in it. The kitchen aspect of it, the senior center is pulled together their funds. They're going to fully fund the appliances and whatnot within the kitchen itself. I think we're just paying for, for the flooring.
Structure.
And the structure part of it. So there is kind of a, a cost share in, in playing there. But again, it's coming out of the same pot of money, the $2 per night hotel thing. You know, the, the one thing that's nice about, I know that there's some concerns about, and this really doesn't have anything to do with the question of going out to bid right now. But it has to go to the question of, I know there's some people with concerns about why are we, why are we giving money to the senior center? It's like, well, the building is owned by the city. And that structure, we either need to upgrade it. I mean, it's, you know, that building is 50 years old now. We either need to upgrade it or we need to do something with it to keep it viable. I mean, the, the electrical in it needs work. I mean, there's, the windows need to be, you know, dealt with. They're not that efficient for energy and whatnot.
And the entrances are not ADA compliant.
Yeah, and so there's, there's at least a base level need, whether you're adding rest, you know, the, the restrooms aren't ADA compliant and, you know, that it is right now. I think there's just an inherent question of saying, look, it's a city-owned facility that needs some upgrades inherently. And it just so happens that, you know, the senior center is the occupant right now. But it can be used for so much more than, than it can currently be used just in a matter of space and, and events and whatnot. So I think there is a value there. But regardless, I mean, the, it's kind of like the bridge over Museum Drive. Eventually, you've got to deal with it and either upgrade it and put some money into it and rehab it, make it viable. Or you move on to something else and you tear it down, you know? So I think, I think part of it is, is that inherently it needs some TLC, so. But the question tonight is, you know, is it the timing right to go out and forbid on it? I, I, again, I don't know the answer to that in the crystal ball. I think if you tabled the other one, it probably makes sense to table this one as well.
Yes.
Yeah, I was trying to think through a way to, if, if it made sense to tr, to try to still get some restrooms and stuff to take care of it, because that would, you know, it's, has been a, an item for quite a while. And I don't know if it, if we come back to it in January, the chances are we're still not going to have anything for the summer season in any public restaurants. So I don't know, even though that we'd have them now if we did go out to bid, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Alderman Gillespie?
None.
Alderman Alk?
Where we have not had any bids put out on that, so we don't have any idea what it's going to run.
You know, the, there was discussion that it would be $600,000 to do all of this work, you know, in that ballpark. But again, that's just our, kind of our estimate. Again, you know, with, with this other work in the alleyway, our original thought was it's going to be like $250,000. And it came back as $400,000. and it came back as uh four hundred and, four hundred and seventy-two thousand.
And our population is increasing, even with elderly, so we're gonna need this space. I would like to see what it would estimate at anyway.
And again, I think with the same mindset, if you have a big enough window of opportunity for a contractor to fit it into their schedule, but then limit their construction window, you know, you, you'd wanna try to find that balance somewhere to try to also find the best price.
Yeah.
And, and the best price usually will come from having at least two to three or four bidding people bidding on it. And that's the frustrating part, but, you know, kind of the luxury of it is if you find a good price and you've had three or four contractors bid on it, you know that you're, you're kind of in the right market, so to speak, of cost. If it's two years out, you've got two years' worth of two dollar room type tax that's coming in that will pad this bank account. You won't have to borrow so much against the general fund, so.
Okay.
Is it six hundred thousand dollars estimate, is that what Kale came up with?
That, that's from, Kale hasn't worked on this part of it, we've been working with Arc International Architecture to put this other stuff together. I don't remember the exact estimate, it was in like the six hundred thousand range.
Does that include the, the money that the senior center was gonna do for the kitchen? Or would that come out of the six hundred and some thousand?
No, it didn't, it didn't, they, they were doing their own, so that six hundred thousand is, is still.
The stuff we would, we would do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, Alderman Doty, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm just looking at both the bid projects and kinda like looking at a priority. To me, the restrooms and the addition, that'd be more of a priority than the, the alley and the apartment. I guess, as far as the public restrooms go, is that gonna be in the senior center, attached to the senior center, or standalone structure?
So, the, the design is, uh, that they are attached to the senior center and they're shared. So the, the way it's set up is, on the men's room and the women's room, there's both, I think there's four stalls each. And that, you can uh put in the, a door, so you've got a couple of restrooms just for the general public to use, but then there's a partition, and you've got a couple of restrooms that just the senior can use, the senior center. But then you can open it all up to the public, or you can close it all up and it's just for the senior center, so it's got flexibility in there. But it is a part of, it is a part of the main structure. But it's got, like I said, it's got flexibility to uh address, you know, if you're having an outdoor event and you don't want people in the senior center building, you can just have them access to the restrooms, but not the rest of it.
Would there be a possibility, um, there be a possibility to be able to put it out to bid as like the public restrooms with the possibility of also doing the addition, or do they wanna try to stick that all in one solid bid and be done with it?
The intent is to do it all at once, because with the addition, they have to remove the existing kitchen and construct the new kitchen. And the old existing bathrooms are going to be removed, and then the new restrooms are constructed that are ADA compliant. So they're, they're definitely tied together.
Okay, and that makes sense, if you're gonna go that far into opening the building up, might as well get it all done in one shot and be everything under roof.
Well, and the, and the new kitchen, it would, could get constructed and so that the senior center can still use the old kitchen. And then, over the course of a week or a few days, whatever it is to transition, once the new kitchen is done, they can move from the old one to the new one, and then demo the old one. So there's definitely.
Along, I'm saying along with this bid, and basically, we're not looking to do anything with the log cabin as of now, correct?
Correct, that was, that was discussed previously. And the result of that conversation was, just for now, to leave that log structure right where it is and not disturb it, and then all of this other improvements would just be built around it.
Okay. Perfect, thanks.
Okay, all right. All right, there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we release this one for bid.
Okay, so we've got a motion, Alderman Alk, to release this part for bid, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second Alderman Doty, okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote please, Stacia?
Gary Alk.
Yes.
Jason Gillespie.
Yep.
Carl Doty.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, motion carries. All right, uh, that is gonna include our ac- conclude our action items, so before we move further, Brett, would you go out there, Bill, would you go out there and grab Dale? See how much it is, we don't know how much this part is yet, so, yeah, makes sense.
Afraid it'll come back too high, we'll have to do it again, but.
But you go with that one.
You didn't put yourself in the corner, did you?
Yeah, actually. You left your ad out there, didn't you?
Gunscap, yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead then and move into discussion items. Eight A, Hill City Library Director's Report.
What I did this time for the third quarter is I gave you a breakdown of first, second, and third quarter to compare for twenty twenty. If you have any questions, I do have the twenty nineteen third quarter. If you have any questions to, it would be like comparing apples and oranges, so I didn't see the point of doing that, but I do have them, if anybody has a question. We are moving forward, we're not going back, we're going forward, so that makes me happy. Any questions on that, any questions?
I think it's very, very well explained on this.
I would, I would like to thank you and the staff and the friends of the library, as I know they're quite engaged in, in the operations at the library and understand what's happening for all the work that you've done to support our community as you have with all of the stuff that's been happening with COVID. Um, I know once school started again, there was a concern with all of that, but you guys have done an awesome job in keeping the library open and accessible to our community, so thank you very much.
I do have just a couple notes, if you guys want, head your calendars out.
Sure.
The book club, of course, we'll meet on the twenty seventh. The library's hosting our annual read for the record. Um, this isn't just something we do because we have nothing else to do, this is actually sponsored by the state of South Dakota. Everyone will be reading that book that day. So at nine thirty that morning, we're gonna have our special storytime with our kids from Boys and Girls Club. And hopefully adults, everybody's welcome, of course, we'll have food, coffee, donuts, juice. And that's at the annex, and so the kids like to do that. Um, Michelle Lee will be reading the book, it does have Spanish in it, and thank gosh, she's fluent in that. The library will participate in the trick or treat, my favorite day of the year, so, we're getting ready. Most importantly, the fiftieth anniversary for the library is November twelfth. We're gonna mix it with a chamber and um, hmm, it's five thirty to seven-ish. And it'll go until everybody goes home. And of course, we're gonna have wonderful food, uh, we'll have appetizers and we're having some sliders and cake and cookies and all that, and we are gonna try and make it flow, so everybody's, you know, they can wear your masks and yeah, sit with each other or not, it's up to everybody what they wanna do.
Okay.
But we'll make it flow, if it's nice, we can be outside.
Yeah.
Any questions on anything?
I don't think so.
We're gonna try to find the people that were responsible back in nineteen seventy on for running the library, Muriel Anderson and the different, different ones.
They had a lot of history.
Yeah, hopefully they'll be able to show up. Uh, Carol Walker got busy with Peter Baylor and found the old articles back when it started. The book, we didn't have any books when it started, so they came up from what, Hot Springs, they brought them up?
Nineteen seventy was the first trustee meeting with absolutely no books. So it took a whole year to get the library reopened. And a librarian from Hot Springs came up, she put books together, ran the library a couple days a week for a few hours. So, yeah, it's very, a lot of, a lot of history, so.
Excellent.
So anyhow, if you get to show up, yeah, we'll have a lot of things to show you.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and welcome up the Boys and Girls Club. Hello. Hello.
So, um, Lisa wanted me to, first of all, apologize, she is stuck in Montana and, oh, my notes. And, uh, so she won't make it. Anyway, um, just giving you the information of what's going on, we've been averaging about forty to forty-five kids a day. Um, we still have a COVID cap at sixty. That is because of BGCA regulations with staff kid ratios. We have been focusing on helping kids get on their homework done and their reading. We've been offer, also, now that it's been colder, been having more hot snacks. The kids have been getting back into social activities, we have a cooking club started, a science club, crafts, gym games, of course. We have also have a, a new program, well, it's an old program for the fourth and fifth. We had a program called Positive Action. And now we have recently purchased the Positive Action programs, again, for the kindergarten first grade groups and the second and third grade groups. It is a, um, oh, a positive, about making good choices, positive choices. It's a positive mental health program, so it's kind of a good time to have, have that program, especially with kids that have been stuck at home for so long. So we've been running that, we are looking to have a fundraiser. Um, our last fundraiser, of course, you know, got canceled, um, and we're running out of time for this year, so we're looking at doing something in-house. It is still in the beginning stages. We are thinking about doing a bingo cornhole type tournament, just kind of a local fundraiser. We are still looking at dates, it'll be either December, I think, fifth or twelfth. And then, of course, on Friday, we will also be having our Halloween carnival. So after the merchant trick or treaters, we will open up our doors for our Halloween carnival, which is my very, very favorite thing. We are still looking for volunteers, but more importantly, for baked goods for our cakewalk. And again, thank you for your continued support and, and everything that you guys do for the Boys and Girls Club. If you guys have any questions?
So Ronnie, this cap you said at sixty people that the organization has, how is that impacting you? It, it looks like we're under that, so.
We are under it, and we have a cap, so we have a cap at sixty kids registered. We, um, we have a little bit of flexibility in meaning that we don't, preschoolers don't say later, but we're right about at sixty cap, but they're doing it so we don't have that many kids, uh, in, especially in our smaller rooms.
Have to turn them away.
Um, and have, yeah, but we haven't hit, we haven't had.
Okay, so it hasn't really impacted negatively yet, okay.
Yep.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent, all right.
I do have a lot of parents that have been, like, that have asked, do you still have availability, do you still have room? And that's why I included that, because yes, we do still have availability, um, and room. Our club in Hot Springs, because of their smaller area, um, they can only have forty-five. So, so they are at a cap. We've been super lucky too, like, we haven't had to close yet, they've already closed, um, I wanna say twice now for a couple, they've closed twice for, I think, one week each time they've had to close, so. Um, and that's, we've been in really close communication with the schools. So I've talked to Blake several times on, you know, if you close, I have to close as well. Um, and so we've been, you know, having discussions back and forth as to what classrooms, who we watch. We did have one case of a preschooler getting COVID. And in that case, we did call, I called every single parent of kids that had been to the club and told them, you know, what the situation was. Being that it was a preschooler, most kids really weren't in contact with that child. Uh, but I just wanted to give them their option on whether they wanted to send their kids or not. We did see a little bit of a dip in attendance for the rest of that week, but this week, you know, it's been back up, so.
Okay.
How's your staffing?
We need more staff. I would love to say, oh yeah, we need staff. We are okay. I could use one more staff, but I am not gonna hire somebody just to fill a body, because right now, we're right at that line of whether we actually need another staff member. It would be nice, but I don't know if until December, I really wanna hire somebody and have that money come out of our, of our, out of our budget. So, um, I'm pretty sure starting, starting in January, I will be seriously looking for a team director. But as of right now, I do have ads out, I'm just not, um, I've interviewed like three people. Then, they weren't my favorites, so I'm not super pursuing it as of right now, but I, if you have somebody in mind, that's great, I would love to see them.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you on Friday.
Yes, I'm so excited.
Okay, uh, so that'll close our discussion items, so now into report items, turning to the common council, Alderman Householder.
I guess as everybody probably knows, our senior center director has resigned. Her last day is this Thursday, and we are having an open house for her from nine to eleven, so anytime that, during that time period, feel free to stop in and, and wish Mary, or thank her for her work and wish her good luck in her new endeavor. Uh, we are not going to be looking to hire a new director. Uh, right now, for the foreseeable future, we'll be revisiting that issue after the first of the year. The only change is that we're going to probably close down on Mondays, not open on Monday, but office hours will remain the same for Tuesday through Friday, all activities. To the best of our ability, we'll continue at full scale, so. Anywhere between nine and eleven. Now, cinnamon rolls and coffee.
All right. Alderman Gillespie, anything? No. Alderman Alk? And Alderman Doty, anything?
Yep, I know, I kinda caught part of the conversation when I phoned in, but for those that don't know, Craig Comer has retired as the Hill City Fire Chief on October twenty-first. And I just kinda just wanna put out there thanking Craig for his service to the, the fire department community, he was an outstanding chief supporting the members of the fire department. Uh, the members, uh, they voted for Jason Peters as the new fire chief. So, I know, I'm excited to see which direction the fire company goes under new leadership and wish him the best.
Excellent. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, I am going to be as brief as I can here, the first thing that I'd like to do is read a proclamation. I'm sure that there isn't anybody that's here that hasn't heard that our girls took the championship in Class A Girls Cross Country, so I've got a proclamation honoring their efforts. Uh, this is honoring Hill City High School's twenty twenty State of South Dakota Class A Girls Cross Country Champions. We're declaring Ranger Days October twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Whereas the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team chemistry of the twenty twenty Hill City High School Girls Cross Country Team has enabled these student athletes to earn a state championship title. And whereas winning as the twenty twenty Class A South Dakota High School Athletic Association State Championship brought honor to Hill City High School and the city of Hill City on the local, state, and national level. And whereas head coach Joe Noyes and the entire coaching staff, team members, parents, faculty, and student body at Hill City High School were integral in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. Now therefore, I, Kathy Skorzuski, Mayor of the city of Hill City, do hereby recognize and heartily congratulate Hill City High School and the twenty twenty Girls Class A State Championship Cross Country Team on its outstanding accomplishment. The girls did a wonderful job, I went out there for a period of time to watch them start and cross the finish line. It was probably twenty degrees outside, it was snowing, it was slippery, it was cold. Our girls brought it, our girls took the challenge and they did an awesome job. Some of our players finished many, many places ahead of where they did last year. And we, of course, had the first one across the finish line, so the girls did a great job, the boys that ran this year did a great job, and I just wanted to recognize the, the spirit that they bring to our community. the spirit that they bring to our community. Uh the other thing real quick is the trick-or-treat. So Merchant's Trick-or-Treat is this coming Friday. I believe it's like three thirty to five thirty. I don't have the correct hours, but I will make sure that I get that out there in a Facebook post. Um I have purchased some candy on behalf of the city, and I will be at Old World Plaza, where we will have some merchants that are set up and some individuals that wanna go ahead and give candy out to the kids that don't have brick and mortar stores. So we will be giving the kids candy and making it a nice little spooky event for them. Um hopefully, it'll work out well, then after that, the kids go over to the Boys and Girls Club. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention was uh the Lane of Lights, so we were making headway um in progress. We've got eleven hundred and fifty dollars that has been pledged to us from various businesses and individuals, so I'd like to thank those people. We're still extremely south of our goal um that we need for this. So we're going to be actively seeking some donations that folks can help us out with when it comes to the Lane of Lights. On Saturday, on Halloween, I will be up at Shoot Rooster, and I will be celebrity bartending. Any proceeds are gonna go toward this project. So um if you guys have any wanted to know information on it, what we're doing, we're coming up together with a game plan, so I'll be sharing that with the council once we have it solidified, but we're working to do what we can. And it is gonna be the cheapest route that we can take, so there's gonna be homemade snowflakes and other things, but we'll get it there. And other than that, I had nothing else, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Finance Officer Stacia Talon.
Um at last meeting, um there was a question regarding our um cost of our sidewalk project. Um and just um so everyone knows, the final um work has been completed at the sidewalk, but the final inspection has not been done. Um so the project end date is until November first of twenty twenty-one. Um so I do not know the total cost of the entire project yet, as bills are still being processed through at the state level. Um the total amount that the city has paid to date is three hundred and eighty-nine thousand ninety-two dollars and eighty-five cents. So once I have more information or get the final numbers for that, I'll bring it back to you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Um the other portion of it that came through is our CD down at Black Hills Community Bank. Um is uh, one of them is up for um maturity. And um the rates are, um honestly, are terrible going into next year. Um but um we've always done a twelve-month with the CD that we have. Um it's at a point two-five percent on it, and I guess I'm gonna let it ride for another year, and hopefully things will change with our rates and we can get something better than that. Um I think it's at a one-point-three-seven right now that we have. So hopefully it'll go back up next year. So that's all I have for you guys.
Okay.
What was the amount of that CD?
Um it's the two-hundred-and-nine thousand.
Okay. All right, City Administrator, Brett McVadde.
Pretty quick updates tonight. Uh Major League Bridge Project, this one, again, we're just waiting for the state to get it through the bid letting process, which can take a couple of months, as we've seen from the sidewalk project. Um so I would imagine um it's been about a month so far, so I'd imagine I'd have information here at the end of um November. Um and again, they're looking, they're looking at a spring construction window for that, so we're talking um late March, April, May. And I know the concern was, well, we don't, we don't wanna have a big air time where uh the potential for that little area to be closed down as far as the street. So there, I talked to Rich Zocker and, and the bed letting office, they're gonna have that time window of cons- of when they constru- construct on it, but within that time window, you know, once they close that bridge off, they can only close it. It was, they're gonna shoot for like thirty-five days, I think, was the max. Um so that's the latest on that. Uh Bull Run, Bull Run subdivision, again, um a majority of the work has been done and completed out there. I know they were still working on some electrical. We're doing quite a few building inspections, footings, framing. Um a lot going on activity-wise. Um we have not done a w- uh final walkthrough yet with the um site works, but that's on our uh to-do list here over the next month or so. We'll do a walkthrough with them um and create the punch list of things that are of concern that need to be addressed. And then ultimately, we'll bring that back to the city council for formal adoption and acceptance of the roads, the sewer, the water, all of that good stuff. Um so that'll be on the horizon, but Danny and I and Travis and um site works will be walking through.
Since it's scary-nice district, I, we'd like to be involved, I think, too.
Sure, you bet, yep. Um so that's Bull Run. Um it's looking great out there, a lot of activity with development, so. Uh the water reservoir project, Kale and I just chatted last week. He has submitted uh all of his paperwork and all of the updated plans to rural development. It's on their desk to review and comment. Um once, once he gets their comments back and any changes, he'll make those corrections. Uh and then you'll probably see a document in front of you as an action item, just to um kind of solidify that plan um to come through, so. Again, that's on the burner, so that's all I have.
Okay, so with no further business, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to move into executive session. Alderman Alk, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gillespie, all in favor? Any opposed? No opposed, motion carried. We're gonna go ahead and move.